Should we do a sound check?
They're on.
That's not right. Okay, that's good. All right, we'd like to open up the Select Board meeting of December 3, 2024 at 6:01 PM. This is an in-person meeting at 138 Main Street, Wenham, Mass., on the first floor. As a convenience to the public, it's available electronically via the Zoom link below or via HW Cam for viewing and participation. In the event of a technology failure, the meeting will continue in person. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom. It's also recorded for playback video on-demand viewing at hwcam.org. Please note that other than call to order, all times are estimated. Items may be taken out of order. Public input, purpose for the public input on matters falling within the jurisdiction of the Select Board and not on the current agenda. Note, public comment on specific agenda items with a public comma period will be deferred until those items are reached. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak only once, 10 minutes total. All persons wishing to address the Select Board during public comments may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hand. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. The Select Board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comment but are not on the agenda. Okay. Let's start with the Town Administrators' update and town announcements, please.
All right, thank you. Couple updates for this evening. First is the Community Preservation Committee. Deadline for applications for CPA money was last week. We, the town, submitted three applications, one for assistance in rewriting and clarifying our historic district guidelines, one for $100,000 for digitization of town records, and we also applied for the $125,000, the gap between to fund the geothermal HVAC system for Town Hall. So that's the gap between the anticipated grant for $500,000, the $500,000 ARPA, and then we had a gap of about $125,000. Website update, so we were able to continue to meet our deadlines. We were able to reduce the migration down to just below, from 240 pages down to just below the allowable 150-page migration. And the team also met last week and approved the color layout, so we're moving forward with that. Open Space Committee has put out a survey for alternative uses or preferred uses of the tennis courts at Pingery Park, so please participate in that. If you get any information, it's on our website. You also can reach out to the Select Board office. We're happy to point you in the right direction. Happy to announce that after Bobby Cody, who was our health inspector, retired a couple of months ago, we were able to find a replacement. So we have recently onboarded Frank Giacalone. He serves as the Health Director for the Town of Danvers and is, in similar fashion to Bobby Cody, serving the Town of Wenham in their health inspection needs on a part-time The basement cleanout is ongoing. Diane Buco has graciously volunteered to kind of spearhead that effort. So she's kind of herding the cats, so to speak, and getting everyone to tag their items down in the basement so that DPW and everybody who's offered to chip in, we can start throwing some stuff away and at least make space down there so that we can walk around. It's not a fire hazard, instead identifying the records down there that need to be saved. So budget process, currently we're preparing for the 14th, which is our budget kickoff meeting. We've been busy sitting down with all departments, coming up with their level-funded budget and also proposing the hypothetical 5% reduction and where that would come from for discussion on the 14th. The Town of Wenham, last time I updated you, we applied for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant back in September for the Miles River Watershed Action Plan. So happy to say we were awarded that grant and did receive the money. So Kate Mallory is spearheading that project and is working in coordination with the Ipswich River Watershed Association. They held a kickoff meeting last week, and the project is expected to take about one year to complete. Oh, and the newsletter. So we're on track. The plan is to have the first newsletter for January 1st or thereabouts, and we sent that email out to everybody. So thank you, everybody who put some ideas in the hat for naming of the newsletter. That, Michelle actually put together the Survey Monkey today, and that link should be being circulated tomorrow where folks can pick their favorite one. So it'll be the title, no names will be associated with it, and we're just going to be asking folks to just pick one, pick their favorite one, and the one that gets the most votes will be the one that's selected. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, I'd just like to say that my first set of office hours with Steve will be on December 10, 5:00 PM at Town Hall. So that's going to be a monthly event. It's always going to be the Tuesday between the two Select Board meetings. And that's all I have.
I just had two quick ones. I wanted to congratulate Stage 284 at the Community House for an incredible run of Beauty and the Beast, sold out every weekend, and some incredible youth actors that's had leading roles in the cast. It was a wonderful performance. If you have not seen the show there, I highly recommend it. I also want to say thank you to our public safety teams, and some of you are here tonight. I don't know if Chief Kavanaugh is also out there somewhere, but I would like to say thank you because I know that I myself have spent multiple weeks driving through other towns, going to work, and seeing plumes of smoke and fire for long-burning fires, and I found it very unnerving to come home one evening and see that Wenham was on fire. And I'm extremely grateful to our public safety teams for getting that fire put out within a matter of hours. It was, to me, very nerve-wracking seeing that basically on many of our doorsteps, some of my friends' backyards, and I thank you all for the swift action. It is greatly appreciated.
I just wanted to make a comment to recognize the proprietor of the West Wenham Richdale, which closed recently due to a non-renewal of that gentleman's lease with the owner of the building. And I know that that store was in that location for many years and provided important convenience and service to the citizens of Wenham, particularly in West Wenham. And so I just wanted to recognize upon its closure that we appreciate the many years of service that the Richdale proprietor provided to the town.
I just have a couple of quick announcements here. One of them is to let everybody know that the Holiday Boutique at Winthrop School is happening this upcoming Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. About 50 vendors, a silent auction, children's shopping area with wrapping gifts for the family and friends, which my family personally partakes in, as well as a professional holiday-themed photo booth, so everyone is welcome, and there's no cost to get in. And I believe, again, it's open 9:00 to 3:00. I just want to say thank you for everybody who participated in the celebration of the first annual Turkey Trot at Cutler. They raised a good amount of money for the kids over there, so that's an amazing experience. I wanted to put on the calendar, the scouts in town are doing a caroling event where we're going to be participating in multiple houses on Friday, the 13th. Those that are looking to have some little folks come and sing you some Christmas and holiday carols should let me personally know by the 7th of December.
Lots of social activities going on. We had one at the CLA where the Bucker School Kindness Club came over and met with seniors for tea and cookies and conversation, so that went very well. I think both the seniors and the school kids enjoy that.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Routine items for approval in a single motion, allowing them to be passed without discussion unless held, and we have nothing to discuss. New business, items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, 10 minutes. Purpose, this comment period will allow for public comment on individual and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda item at the discretion of me, the chair. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak only once, 10 minutes total per items unless noted on the agenda item. All right, let's get to the Police Department swearing in of new officers and presentation of a plaque to former Police Chief Peter Carnes' wife.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for getting us on the agenda and allowing us just to have a few quick minutes to acknowledge two phenomenal new officers and for me to make this presentation. Unfortunately, we were hoping Brendan Carnes', Peter's son, was going to be here for the presentation, but neither his son or wife were able to make it. His son is deployed overseas, and so that's unfortunate. But I did still want to make the presentation anyway, just for the folks here to see they did a really nice job doing this memorial plaque. And we're going to be sure that the deputy and I will personally drive it down to Mrs. Carnes' down the Cape just to make sure it gets to her, but I'm proud of the job that they did. We use the same company that did the plaques for retired Sergeant Machine and for Billy Foley, retired officer that passed away. So we're going to make sure that this gets into the right hands. Peter Carnes, for those that don't know, was really the kind of the grandfather, the beginning of what I like to say is everything right about what we're doing here in Wenham Police Department. And as far as getting things on the right track, hiring the right people, promoting the right people, doing the right things, and I think we're doing that now. As you can see, when we recognize these new officers, that the men and women of the Wenham Police Department that are here in support is a testament to the people that we're hiring and the processes that we have in place, and I couldn't be prouder of everyone that we have here today. I thank you for the kind words, recognizing public safety. Certainly, fire's been busy, and we're happy just to help out in a little way for them to do their jobs effectively, and so that means a lot. So Peter Carnes, when he left here in 1995, he went over to, down the Cape, to work as a police chief down there for quite a bit of time, and then from there, he went to Stonehill College as the police chief, and then he was running the police academy down the Cape before he passed away. He was very well-known throughout Massachusetts law enforcement and in the whole state. He did a lot of phenomenal things, so this is just a small token of that, so we're happy to do that. Now, let's get on to some other pretty neat things. I don't know who wants to go first. We'll let Dave Laconti go first. Officer, he's a little tied up with the gang, so please come on up. Now, these officers were both hired in May, and this is a long time coming. We're glad we were able to incorporate it with the meeting and with the department meeting that we had earlier tonight. And Dave came to us with 20 years of experience, an incredible amount of experience. He's a certified field training officer, certified motorcycle officer, and recipient of a lifesaving or an award, a Valor Award from the state of New Hampshire for an officer-involved shooting event that he was involved in. He's been a phenomenal addition, not only with his years of experience in law enforcement, but with his ability to assimilate and get along with community members and the members of the police department. He's been a great fit. And the biggest thing we're trying to accomplish, and I think we're doing a great job with who we've hired, is to hire good quality people that know how to treat the public and know how to treat each other, and I can't tell you how happy I am to have Dave on board. Unfortunately, his family couldn't make it, so after he does get sworn in by the town clerk, I'm going to pin the badge on him, so.
Don't worry about me.
Do you solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Bible and the Constitution of America, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you.
[applause]
This is, I love seeing this. I have four kids, and they're older now, and I miss these days, and it's just awesome, awesome to see. Tom came to us the same time that Dave Laconti, May, and he was a police officer. He comes to us with a bachelor's degree in economics from Salem State. And again, to echo the same comments I made about Dave, I'm so proud of how well these two officers have fit in, how well they've gotten along with each other, with the other members of the Wenham Police Department, and with their interaction with the community members here in town. They've been an incredible addition, and obviously, we can tell there's a happy family here as well, so. But I can't say how happy I am, and we'll have Diane swear.
Do you solemnly swear that you will uphold and defend the Constitution and the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Bible and the Constitution of America, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer to the best of your ability? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, a little change in the agenda here. We're moving to Item D, which is public reading of the COVID proclamation. Town of Wenham, Massachusetts proclamation thanking essential workers for their service during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas on March 10, 2020, Governor Charlie Baker declared a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, marking the beginning of an unprecedented time of crisis and resilience in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic presented immense challenges to public health, safety, and essential services, demanding extraordinary efforts to maintain continuity and support for residents. And whereas essential workers across Wenham demonstrated unwavering commitment and dedication to their community by continuing to provide vital services, often at personal risk, to protect and sustain the town's well-being throughout the pandemic. And whereas the Town of Wenham would like to recognize and express profound gratitude to the town's essential workers, including those in the Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, Water Department, Health Department, essential administrative support roles, and facility staffs who went above and beyond in their duties. And whereas these employees showed remarkable resilience, flexibility, and care, working tirelessly to meet the needs of the community under challenging and evolving conditions. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of Wenham, do hereby extend our deepest appreciation to all essential workers who served our town with dedication and selflessness during the COVID-19 pandemic. We recognize their invaluable contributions and encourage all residents to express their thanks to these individuals who played a critical role in helping Wenham navigate and endure this difficult time. Approve this third day of December 2024, the Wenham Select Board. Peter Clay.
Dear DeParrati.
Ben Timman.
Karen Anger.
Gary Cheeseman.
Thank you.
And if anybody would like to make some comments, please.
Just a few things that, what we actually did and how things were handled. As you know, the pandemic started on March 10, 2020, and ended June 15, 21. Some of the things the town did is we would meet three to four times a week, which included fire, police, town administrator, board of health, director of administrative services, and that was just to stay up to date with the protocols that were changing daily, almost every day they were changing. Throughout the entire pandemic, fire and police responded to every emergency call. The fire department, BLS ambulance, transported a very large number of COVID-19 positive patients. Knowing that not much was still known about COVID-19, this was probably the worst part of the job, because we all had family, and we didn't know if we were bringing it home. And when we did respond in the ambulance, we'd have one EMT go to the door, and they were dressed in gloves, shoe covers, gown, mask, glasses, and a face shield. So when we entered your home, it looked like you were about to have surgery. So, and we always had one person outside unless they were needed inside, and then we would have to obtain a third party to drive the ambulance, because we assumed everyone was contaminated that touched the patient. The patient was then brought to the hospital, where we entered a separate quarantine area until the doctor cleared everyone. We were not allowed through the hospital. It was actually pretty bizarre, the whole situation. Returning from the hospital, the EMTs would have to go and take a shower to decontaminate, and every single firefighter had a spare set of clothing that they would get into after every ambulance call. Then the ambulance would get a complete decontamination inside and out, using Clorox wipes, misting machine to treat any flat surfaces. And it got really hard for basically everyone, because each call was lasting two to three hours, and these people had jobs, whether they were online or not, but they were losing their jobs. And we'd end up decontaminating the station three to four times a day, and that was with the Clorox wipes and misting machine would do every doorknob, everything throughout the place. We were constantly trying to, with the shortage of supplies, we actually did quite well through MEMA and FEMA. We would get the heads up when there was. were coming in. We knew a few people, and we got a lot of supplies, which was wipes, hand sanitizer, gowns, all the stuff needed. And in the end, fire, police, board of health, and all town departments did an incredible job. And I applaud everyone. They answered every call through the pandemic and worked tirelessly and selflessly to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents. And we thank you for recognizing us. That's it.
Alrighty, so, thank you. We are the Wenham Housing Authority, town appointed tenant board member appointing starting December 3rd, 2024.
Thank you.
Through June 30th, 2029, one seat open. Mark A. Hollingsworth, Sharon M. Ivy.
So I'm going to request that the board table this until a later date. We, so evidently back in 2021, the individual that the seat is vacant was elected as, and was served as the tenant representative on the housing authority. And also in 2021, there was a law passed that required select boards to appoint in what we believe to be a five-year appointment, a tenant representative on their housing authority. And then about a year later, Wenham was issued a waiver, because there was already an individual that was a tenant that was representative, representing on the housing authority. So right now, we're getting a legal opinion as to whether we are still under a waiver, and it needs to be elected, or if we can just move forward with a five-year appointment. So we don't have the answer right now, and need to do a little bit more homework and come back to the board.
Okay, so we'll move on to the review of four, although I think it's three, CPC grant agreements. Wenham Village Improvement Society, the T House, Hamilton Wenham Regional School District, Wenham Historical Association and Museum, Buker School, Karen Wolf Memorial Gardens.
All right, excuse me. So the Buker School, the Karen Wolf Memorial Gardens, actually, we're not going to be asking for the review of the grant agreement, because it's actually a town project. So we do not need a grant agreement in that instance. However, if you can scroll down, we'll start with going through the Wenham Village. So what these are is these, so once, once CPC makes the recommendation to town meeting, and town meeting takes the vote, it's not a, it becomes under the jurisdiction of the select board to enter into a grant agreement with the recipients of the money. So these are those grant agreements. And with that, there is some, if you can scroll down a little, there is some, there's some discretion that the board has. KP Law highlighted that, you know, in some cases, you may want to put some sort of historic preservation restriction on the property. So in this, in this case, it was the windows that were redone. And, you know, so basically, this is an initial discussion of all these grant agreements. We're looking for any feedback, and if this is something you'd like to explore, we can provide further information. So, you know, that, that's one. And then we keep scrolling down. So, and then payment, payment and inspection. So really, there's, there's two options allowable to the board. However, Lauren Goldberg has advised us that we should choose option two, because there is a fine line between option one in it becoming a town project, which you don't want it to be, because the reason for these grant agreements is to grant the money, distribute the proceeds, and allow them to conduct the project. Because if it, there's a, there's a line there that, you know, can, can vary, but once crossed, could be construed as a town project, and then it has to comply with procurement law. So in this case, she, she recommends you go with option two. You grant all the money, you send it all, and there's clauses further on down the agreement that allow for the town to get that money back in the event that the project wasn't completed. And similarly, optional progress reports, you know, again, you don't want to, she said this is fine, if you want progress reports, you know, you just don't want to be too granular in, you know, reviewing invoices and such, which had been a practice at Wenham in the past, but you want to kind of get away from that. And this is, so we kind of put this in there, it's just kind of general three-month updates on how the project is going. Keep scrolling, please. All right, so that is all for WVIS. And then similarly, in the other two, is, there is no historic preservation, because it's not a historic project. But there are, similarly, there is the payment option, and option two is recommended in both of them. And the progress report, which both have been filled in with similar three-month project reports, 90 days after the start of the project.
So we're basically standardizing these correctly?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, in a way, yeah.
Historic restriction, though, is a question to be decided by the select board, whether or not you want to pursue that with the property across the street. It used to be the T House.
I'd like to see some options on that in a future meeting, or something like that would look like.
And that question is not applicable to the, the third grant, Wenham Historical Association?
Correct. And, yeah, and so similarly, this meeting is, will fulfill the obligation to keep in the warrant, excuse me, in the motion, the CPC motion, we had to keep the CPC apprised of our progress. So this was, we notified them last week, and, you know, so that we're going to have the open discussion of these, so that if anybody had any comments, they could come and make their comments. So this will serve as, you know, their comment period, and then we can go back and we'll finalize the documents for next time, incorporating any feedback we have here tonight. You know, it'll be back at a later meeting for signatures.
So we do have the leadership of the Wenham Village Improvement Society with us this evening. So could we recognize Kristen Sleeper?
Oh, hi. I'm Kristen Sleeper, 19, William Fairfield. I'm the current president of the Wenham Village Improvement Society. And I am excited to have this finally on this agenda, and I would love to move forward and try to make all the decisions that we could possibly. This evening, our project, as you can see, is, is complete. We are done, and we are, have been desperately waiting for the funds to be dispersed. I have reviewed this grant agreement in detail, and the only outstanding item that I can tell is, is the whether or not there'll be a historic restriction, and if so, what the terms of that would be. And I would love if that could be settled, or we could discuss it and have that wrapped up, so we can move forward and get these all signed. So, we would prefer not to have historic restriction. We're already under the HTC and are limited to what we can do and whatnot. The main concern with the historic restriction, at least the one that's posted on the website, I've looked through many towns, the CPC, they're all very different and have different restrictions. The only one that I would take issue with is, says that you cannot place another building or structure on the property. And given that we own the tennis courts with a shed, that would be very hard for us to promise, given that at some point in time, we may want to put another shed down there to further house brackets and things. So the rest of it basically is, don't put garbage in front, and you can't put RVs in, and no antennas. It's tough, we would never do anyways. But our concern as a group is really just the, no extra buildings on the, on our property, which is large, it's eight acres. So that's, that's a hard promise to make.
Thank you.
Could you put the, the historic restriction verbiage up again?
Well, that's the museum one, um, it's the different, yeah.
The first one, the T House one? Right there, I think, or, I'm sorry, proceeding page 16, I think.
This award was in the amount of 30,000, is that correct? Thirty-five. And it was for the windows, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I guess this seems like a lot of restriction for a grant that funded windows, which is not the entirety of the structure. So this, this feels like too much.
Certainly don't want to get into position where we have to go to the state to get approval for restrictions just on windows. So I think we can minimize or dispense with it. And I think, you know, certainly Lauren Goldberg is the expert on this stuff. So again, I would go with the option two on the other two.
I agree with that. And then with respect to the progress report option, I'd like to see that in all three agreements. But I think if there's a consensus that for the T House agreement, that there'd be no historic restriction, that it be option two on the disbursement, and that we do the progress report language, then I think we can probably approve that one tonight, right? Or is there other placeholders that would need to be?
No, we would just add the, the proposal and the, the appendages and things like that, to tighten it up. But basically, the, the language wouldn't change. We would, you know, accept option two, and then delete the historic preservation section entirely. And that would be the only changes, unless there's other changes the board's, the board wants.
Want to vote on?
Sure. I'll, I'll move that, should we do them one at a time, or?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. So I'll move that we approve the CPC grant agreement with the Wenham Village Improvement Society as drafted in the packet, except that section eight, I believe. Can you scroll it up, Michelle, if you would? Section, wait a minute.
It's like eight has to be deleted, the number eight.
Go back to the, to the restrictions, please. Okay, thank you. So let me start again. So I moved that we approve the CPC grant agreement between the town of Wenham and the Wenham Village Improvement Society in the form as presented in the select board packet, with the exception of section three C being deleted. And if we could scroll down some more. The inclusion of so-called option two in section seven, as opposed to option one, and the inclusion of section nine, which may need to be renumbered, will need to be renumbered, called progress reports as written in the draft.
Second.
And let's vote, okay? Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right, let's tee up the next one.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the CPC grant agreement between the town of Wenham and the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District in the form as presented in the select board packet with option, so-called option one under section seven being included and not option two, and the section nine progress report language being included.
Second.
Vote. Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right.
And I'll move that we approve the CPC grant agreement between the town of Wenham and the Wenham Historical Association and Museum in the form presented in the draft contract provided in the select board packet with the same changes in the preceding contract, namely, option one in section six as opposed to option two, and the inclusion of the progress report language in section seven.
Option two.
I think it was two instead of one.
I beg your pardon. Option two instead of option one.
Second.
Vote. Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
And we're not voting on the Buker School.
Right?
Correct.
Alrighty. Great job, Ben. All right, let's move to the discussion on 2025 Daniel Town Meeting warrant articles.
This is just a, some general discussion I'm going to share with you in a minute. The, we've started the conversation internally, so looking for any staff requests of, for the needed warrant articles. And we figured it'd open up the floor to the select board to at least start the discussion. If anybody has any thoughts they would like to share, we're starting to compile a list, so that next time, you know, when I come back to you, I'll have a more complete document. So here before you is, is what the departments have requested so far. I hope you just scroll down a little.
Hi, just, sorry. What is the reinstate late fee for dog registration?
Would you like me to speak on that?
Yes, please, Diane.
I know how you love dog stuff.
I wasn't going to put names to the requests.
Yeah, well, it's obvious, I guess. I just, I think that some people just need some incentive to register their dog. The law doesn't just help people to do it. We used to do a dog contest. We did a lot of stuff to try to drive up participation, but the numbers seem to have been coming down. And I just thought, and, and it's less than it was. It used to be a $25 late fee.
So should we, so that, got it. Should we reinstate dog contests, get Kate on the case?
So, we, we could try, we could try. I like, I like doing that. We had the calendar, remember? Yeah. But anyway, no, I, I just kind of threw that out there. It's just up in the air. I just think, you know, it is, Karen's looking skeptical. It is the law to register your dog. There's health reasons, whatever, but a lot of people just don't. And now if there's no late fee, and there's nothing, a lot of people just don't.
Karen's looking skeptical, because if it's, is it $10 a year that you were, would be charged a late fee?
So it would be if you don't register your dog by February 1st. It would be $10 on top of the fee of 15.
My face is more that I think I owe you $120.
It used to be $25.
Yeah, well.
So, you know, just an idea.
Great. Any other comments about where we are with Tom Warren's?
More beyond seven? About, along with seven, the education fund as well, which is one of the kind of leftover trust funds.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to say there, but, yep.
And then how about, how do we need to get in compliance with the new state law as far as accessory dwelling units?
Accessory?
Dwelling units. Dwelling units.
Okay.
That, right, so that will be, that's on the planning board's agenda, they are looking into that, the, if the select board has any preference or comments, you know, I'm sure the planning board would like to hear them, but similar to any zoning change, they'll have their public hearing process and ultimately settle on a recommendation for inclusion into the warrant much later on in the process.
And one other is, we, the questions came up about, what, fifty-five, thirty-nine as far as employees going on active military duty?
Yes, yep.
Is that something to look at, too?
Yeah.
I can catch that, came up recently. And they can keep, you guys, as things pop into your head, can keep them coming, I just figured I'd throw it out there, because we are getting to be at that time, once the first of the year rolls around, we'll stop, you know, we'll start looking at a real draft of what the warrant is going to look like, and start to, you know, kind of whittle down and solidify exactly what's going to be on there.
Okay, that was my question, sort of what's the timeline, so when, there's things that I'm thinking over, but like, at what point do you want to get ideas, and then we'll discuss the ideas?
Yeah, I mean, we'll probably open, you know, we can have this as a standing art, like an old business, in case anything will be continued, but I think generally, we'll open the warrant right, right around the first or second meeting in January, and we'll leave it open historically, I believe, try to leave it open for about a month, and then we'll close it, but that doesn't mean you can't reopen it, add something, and then close it again, so, but you do want to keep in mind that any additions have to go through legal for drafting, and then we have to have it finalized and ready to go to printer, I believe it's about a month to five weeks before town meeting date, so there's not a ton of time in between, it sounds, feels like it's a long way away, but first week in April comes pretty, pretty quick, once January first comes.
So start floating the ideas soon, basically?
Yes.
Just one comment with respect to the potential inclusion in the annual town meeting warrant of a three A rezoning, which obviously, for Wenham anyway, is on hold pending a decision from the Supreme Judicial Court. In the town of Milton case, I did check the docket today, and not surprisingly, there's still no decision from the SJC, so just an update on that.
Do you think it'll be next month, Ben, possibly?
I don't think so, I think it's more likely to be like in February, but that's just an educated guess.
And I asked Margaret to work with the planning board to come up with a schedule to get dates on our calendar, assuming that, you know, the plan is to bring three A forward around that time.
Is the anticipation that we're going to vote for the new school, too, on here?
Yes.
You might want to put that on there.
Are you, have anything else on warrants?
Okay, discussion of potential approval of assessing clerk data collector, principal assessor, and COA administrative assistant job descriptions.
So, with the assessing clerk, assessing clerk data collector and the principal assessor, these are two essentially new jobs that are created by the town of Wenham, it does not reflect the structure that was before we entered into the IMA, now we obviously were in about two years in a shared service agreement with, with Hamilton, so this is a little bit of a restructuring, and the, the Board of Assessors was scheduled to meet tonight at four o'clock, however, they were unable to get a quorum, they were going to meet and provide feedback, so we don't have that feedback, however, these job descriptions are a function of the select board, and you can approve them with, as is, with comments, wait, you know, with comments for us to change, wait for comments from the Board of Assessors, it's up to you, the plan was to have their comments ready to go for tonight's meeting, however, they weren't able to meet.
Do you have a recommendation as to whether there's any harm in waiting?
I, I don't see any harm in waiting.
Terry?
Terry's late.
Terry is here, Terry is, will be our new principal.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to table, or just pass?
No, we just pass, we'll pass over it, and similarly, the COA administrative assistant, it was brought to me, brought to my attention today, and I felt like it was, it was a good idea, and it probably, although Jim won't love this, because I know he wants to get the job posted and hired, but we, you know, probably take this opportunity to do a little bit deeper dive in the COA as a whole, and maybe, you know, take a look at all the job descriptions and make sure, you know, instead of just filling the job because it was there, make sure Jim's needs, you know, his, his needs and thoughts for the department are being met, and, you know, the needs of the residency, if we can do anything differently or more efficient, maybe it stays the same, maybe there are some changes, so we may want to, to wait on that one as well.
Everybody fine with that?
So I expect them, next meeting then, to have the research?
Alrighty, moving to all business items for individual consideration, these items will allow for public comment, ten minutes purpose, this comment period will allow for public comment on the individual, and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda item at the discretion of the chair, rules, two minutes per person, a person may speak only once, ten minutes total per item unless noted on the agenda item. So we move immediately to discussion and potential vote to sign iron rail licensing agreements, youth soccer and iron rail gymnastics.
Yep, so these are the final two, Joe has been spearheading this project, and I'll give you some, give you a brief overview.
Mr. Chairman, may I have to recuse on the iron rail lease, so I can't participate in the discussion on that, so I'll step out, are you, do you have a sequence that you're going to be doing the leases in?
Oh, doesn't matter which one you say you're accused.
Do you mind doing, uh, iron rail gymnastics first?
Sure.
And I'll leave.
Absolutely, and I'll be brief, Mr. Chairman, thank you, these are the last two licenses that were up for expiration, this is, Iron Rail Gymnastics Academy is the first one, and it is going to be a three-year license agreements, actually, I'm sorry, they're actually going to be labeled leases now, and the reason why we're labeling these leases is, I'm sorry?
You were right, license.
Yeah, so this option will not require Massachusetts thirty B, that's the procurement law compliance, and essentially the rationale is, council advises that the license is freely revocable, the party does not require an interest in the property, rather, it's a limited right, so as long as the town allows such a limited right, would not trigger, again, the procurement law, so essentially, that's why we went with that option, just, you know, basic things here, the rent first year is five thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars, forty-one cents, years two and three do have a two and a half percent increase to that number.
That's monthly?
Uh, per month, yes.
Right.
Yes, sorry, month, yeah, just, they also wanted just to put in the lease that the equipment shall remain exclusive property of the academy, this includes spring floor, gymnastics equipment, and installations to accommodate the equipment, the pit area is also included in that as well. Similar to the other leases, the, this is actually aligned, this is to do with real estate tax, it's, every license says this, it says these funds shall be applied to the real estate tax associated with the rental unit, and then to the iron rail revenue account, this has not changed the rent amount at all, it's only there to, for the town to collect taxes from the rent revenue, and that's due to state law, so that we're just abiding by MGL by doing that. Is there any questions with that? Okay, and I can move on to the second one, yes. Okay, and sorry, to clarify their licenses, the second license is the Hamilton Wenham Youth Soccer Association, this is again, three years, set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, the rent for this will be five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, there is no cost of living adjustment for this across years two and three, and the town shall have the right to terminate this agreement by giving the Youth Soccer Association a twelve-month notice, also, that was, I don't know if I mentioned that, the gymnastics will also have a one-year grace as well to, if we do want to terminate, we have to give them a one-year notification, and we'll have the real estate tax language as well on this, and youth soccer just wanted to request that they are not required to submit an in-depth financial statement, however, a receipt and expenditures report will still be provided to that. I think that's everything there as well, and again, this will be a license to avoid the thirty B procurement law process as well. So, is there any questions on that?
And the youth soccer agreement, if I remember correctly, does not allow for subletting, is that correct? Subleasing, subletting, whatever the correct?
Yes, if we wanted to pursue that, that would be a separate process, we might explore that, but this contract's just solely with the Youth Soccer Association for now, yeah.
Does this also include the softball fields that's directly behind iron rail?
No, this is exclusively the soccer fields at iron rail, yep. My understanding is a softball field's not used too often, sometimes by Little League, but not too often.
As someone who has a softball player in the house, it is used quite regularly.
Oh, is it? Okay, oh, great.
Any further questions?
No, I'm good, but should we vote this one, so then Ben can come back? Are we voting? We are voting, right?
Yep.
So motion to approve the, I move to approve the iron rail youth soccer and, youth soccer licensing agreement dated July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes. Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
Thank you.
Can you get Ben back in?
Yep, he's coming.
Okay, I move to approve the iron rail youth soccer license agreement, did I take, is that right?
Iron rail gymnastics.
I'm sorry, move, I move to approve the iron rail gymnastics licensing agreement dated July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Karen, yes.
Gary, yes.
All right. Okay, continued discussion regarding Jane Polowski's offer to donate ten Hilltop Lane. So I spent some time, as I always do on Tuesdays, with Steve, I mean, I went and looked at the property, I mean, why would we want that property?
I haven't seen it.
It's, it's in a neighborhood, it's just like an island out there, what are we going to do with it? What could the town possibly do with that property? And I think we owe Ms. Polowski an answer.
Yeah, my concern on it is if we accept the gift, that there's a small tax revenue loss, but it might set precedent for all the other lots, especially that particular area, that would represent the even greater loss of tax revenue.
The tax revenue is just for, your information is about sixty-five dollars a year, like you said.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five dollars.
Did these, these lots get downgraded from last year?
Yeah, so they're, they're all, that's, they're all unbuildable, Terry, you, right, and then Ken also has a comment.
I have some comments to add on that, I'm going to go to that property when my term comes.
What's he, it's only sixty-five dollars a year?
Well, Terry, can you maybe highlight what's going on out there? Well, first, Terry, and then she's just going to highlight the assessment process and what's going on.
Sure, I'm not prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Wenham, just for a little bit of a background, Wenham is very wet, you know, so, and there was no official sort of land valuation policy, which we spent quite a bit of time coming up with one, and that's why the significant difference in valuation between last year and this year, so, you know, that lot and several others in that neighborhood are truly unbuildable, they're wet, and they also, they're affected by that septic buffer, so, you know, there wouldn't be enough area for many of the lots to support a septic system. Typically, land that's unbuildable is assessed at ten percent of market value, with Wenham, we did some further adjusting because of the significant wetlands and truly unbuildable nature, you know, an unbuildable lot might be unbuildable because it doesn't have enough frontage, or, you know, it's undersized, but there are further factors in Wenham with the wetness and the buffer zones.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Sure, yeah.
Please.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
Thank you. For those, the two of you on the other side of the table that I haven't met yet, I'm Ken Whitaker, and I live at Seven Enon Road, which is right here. The comment was raised earlier about why we would want this property, and that's a, I think, a good point, because this particular property, and indeed, a lot of the properties around what I'm calling the Hilltop Loop, has no commercial value whatsoever, it's wetlands, the current owners have held it over forty years, I think they got it by an inheritance sale, so I think it's been there about sixty years, never touched, and you must ask the question, why now? Why are they deciding to do this, and why are they giving land away? And I think the only basis of that would be the fact that they're not giving away much, and they're escaping liability. This lot was assessed in two thousand and twenty-three for twenty-seven hundred dollars, now it's assessed for fifty thousand dollars. Every lot around that loop that's similarly structured, and there's two next to my property as well, were assessed in the range of about three thousand dollars, and now they're all assessed for about fifty thousand dollars, all wetland, no commercial value.
Yeah, but it's, it's just been adjusted down just for, for.
Well, I got this from the, the assessors today.
Okay.
Okay, it was on the books. What is, what is the current amount?
Forty-one hundred?
Correct.
Forty-one hundred.
So the FY twenty-five values are not online yet, they will be shortly.
And they are forty-one hundred for all of those lots?
There could be some variation in size.
Oh, close, okay.
Yes, so, so the land valuation policy that I was talking about earlier, that was voted on by the board a couple of months ago.
Okay.
There were significant abatements that we received for those lands out there when we adjusted the land tables, and it triggered the assessors and the board of assessors to really do a deep dive on the developable potential out there on those parcels, and, you know, based on that fact finding, it was, you know, clear that they were unbuildable and likely, you know, they'll never be able to be built on.
That's very refreshing to hear, and my neighbor Steve Charette will be very, very pleased to hear that, because last year, he came up to me and said, Ken, my tax mill increased by about eight thousand dollars with the new assessments, so he's just made his evening, I wish he could be here to enjoy it. Raises the second question as to what the town is going to do with these lots, if they have basically no commercial liability whatsoever, perhaps they'll be of interest to the abutters for a very low price, and I would ask you to consider that, I for one would be perhaps interested in buying those two lots that are owned by the town right next to my property. The funny thing about this is, I remember right when I moved into town about twenty years ago, there was an action at town meeting to get those, to auction those properties off, and at the time, I lobbied against it because I was brand new to town, and I didn't realize that they were unbuildable, and I didn't want somebody building a house right next to me, so I'd like to see that renewed, perhaps, and there might be some interest from the neighbors to acquire that property in the, in the range of costs that we're talking about here, the assessment, perhaps less, but I'm certainly relieved that I about here, the assessment, perhaps less, but I'm certainly relieved that I don't have to consider $53,000 to acquire the property. Thank you.
So, like I said, we should not buy or take the property. We, we, it's of no use to us.
Well, certainly, that's the change in the assessment, you know, going from a $850 loss down to a $65 tax loss by taking it. So, it's a question of, uh, you know, if we take it, do we turn around and, uh, sell it to, or offer it up for sale to, uh, abutters or other interested parties? They would have, they'd have to go to an auction, right? And town meeting if we.
You know, I would suggest that, I mean, I, I think, I would think that if they could donate to the town, they could just as easily donate to a butter and relieve themselves the liability, if that's what they're looking to do.
Right.
And, you know, the, the town may want to, instead of acquiring property, take a look at, you know, similar to what was suggested is to take a list of, again, you know, it's something I hesitate to bring up, because I'm not sure if we could be ready by this town meeting, but come up with, um, you know, a list of quote-unquote "low-hanging" properties that are clear and maybe thin out the town's inventory of land with, you know, these landlocked, postage-stamp, um, properties that, you know, really have no value to anybody but the abutters. And you may not get any interest that way anyways, and you're stuck with them, but at least identify, uh, you know, and Gary, you've, you've suggested this should be done, and it hasn't been done thoroughly yet, but is to, you know, invent, we have the list of town-owned properties, we know who, generally, we know who controls those properties, but we need to do more due diligence on cleaning up the titles and figuring out how they were acquired, because the acquisition method by the town will dictate who has the authority to surplus and dispose of them, and what course of action needs to be taken on how you can dispose of those properties. So, generally, it will either be town meeting action or select board action, and I think in just about every case, you know, has, excuse me, have to be some form of open and competitive bidding process. Generally, the most efficient way, from what I've been familiar with, is, um, you know, contracting with some sort of an auction house and package a number of parcels together across town, and they'll auction them off, uh, in compliance with mass procurement law, and, you know, obviously, they take their commission, and the net proceeds will just come to the town.
And that package will not include Jane Polowski's property?
Yeah, right. If it won't, if you guys don't.
Yeah, I see no, no.
Did you?
No, sorry.
No, I just, Terry wanted to add, but, yeah, if you could speak in the microphone so they can hear you.
Just one quick, um, point of consideration, too. Assessed values are based on, you know, current market conditions, uh, current condition of the property as well. Um, you know, they're not likely to ever become developable, but should they dry up, but, you know, 10 years, 100 years from now, they could be buildable. Certainly, the ones on Hilltop are sizable enough that they would meet, you know, the 40,000 square foot minimum. It's just a consideration, something I wanted to make you aware of.
Thank you. Karen?
So, my question is, is have we engaged with Kate Mallory, or have we engaged in the Open Space or Climate Action, any of the additional groups that potentially could use this as a, as a learning space, as a space that, that we could set up items for kids, that you could have, uh, an open bus stop that the kids could use as a learning aspect? I mean, that's, it's land, and I understand it's not buildable, but it doesn't mean that you can't have a community circle up there. These folks are truly up on the hill, and so they're as far away from everything as possible.
It's on down at the bottom.
But, all right, but in that section of town, there's far away from the main section of town as, as, you know, a small community could get. There's, to me, no reason why we wouldn't take it and be able to use it as an open space or developable, develop area.
I think, I think, I, my concern would be liability, especially if it's wet.
Well, yeah.
We have some 15. I just wanted to point out that, um, 12 to 13 of those properties towards the end are in private ownership by Mr. Charette, their own, and he has no intention of developing them or selling them. He had purchased all 13 lots for $65,000 about 10 years ago. After he had gone through a series of owners and everybody thinking that they could develop it and sell it to the next person when they found out they couldn't. So, it is, it is not open land right now, it's in private ownership, except for those three parcels that I mentioned, the two next to me, and, uh, and then potentially 10 Hilltop.
Good question, I think, maybe that Ken, you'd be best to answer. So, um, does Mr. Charette own all of the directly abutting properties to number 10?
You can see on the map there. Anything listed, see? Mr. Charette owns, there are three houses in here that are relevant. There's one right here, I believe, and there's a home here and a home here. Steve owns these, everything through here. Twenty to 25. Yeah, and starting here. And so, I think it totals to 12 properties, and there's only three houses along Enon. This, my home in here, and these are two open properties as well, but all of those are in private ownership.
Okay, but according to this, um, annotated map, the town presently owns what's listed as three and four.
Yeah, three, four. Excuse me. Yeah, absolutely. Three, four, and.
That's okay.
Across the street, 57, down lower. Yes, that is correct.
So, just, just for the sake of discussion, if, if the town were to, and I, so far, I haven't heard any good reason why we ought to accept this, this gift of 10. But if we were to do so, we would have three adjoining properties that would merge into however many, you know, whatever the square footage is, uh, looks like it's.
All the properties are about an acre.
Yeah, 43,000 square, so, yeah. What do we know about those other parcels, and would the combination of those three parcels provide any particular amenity to the town in the way?
I think they're all wet. Yeah. Three, four, it's all wet.
All of it's wet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all on the state.
When I first started, um, our previous town administrator said that the towns are really bad at managing their own property, so, and he was really talking about iron rail. But, um, so I started looking at all the town-owned properties, and I, I went and walked along Hilltop and looked at this, and they're soaking wet.
Yes, but no question, this is, this lot right here, the one next to my house, not only wet, it's absolutely impenetrable. I can't even get there, it's so overgrown. And it is wet, it drops off dramatically from the side of the road. They're definitely wet.
So, are they still wet now?
Yes. Well, they might be dry at this time of the year, but, you know, with, with the drought and everything else, but, I mean, it's, you can see it walking in the road, it really dips down, and then it's, uh, scum cabbage heaven in there, it's very wet. No question, it's wetlands, I'm on the condom, though I recognize it, they are definitely wetlands, so.
If the town were to pass a, a, an ADU bylaw, accessory dwelling unit bylaw, that's even more lenient than what the state may be requiring, um, would, would this parcel be unable to support even an ADU to, say, parcel two, which has a house on it?
Um, I don't think so. Going from memory, the, the wetland boundary, as in the state, when that generally tends to underestimate the extent of the wetlands, because it's done aerially, they're actually going out, doing the survey, but my, it comes up very close to the road here, probably within 10 feet, and then it kind of comes down like this to get to the Roberts property. So, at best, you might have 30 feet back from the edge of the road, and it's simply not close to being enough for them to build any kind of structure there and be applied with the wetland.
Right.
Do we have access to the CAI? Do we have drive? Then you could put up the, uh, wetlands layer.
Do we use this announcing jay?
I say, yeah, Terry, you might be the most proficient at it.
You know, another consideration on town-owned properties that are not actively used is, generally, they attract encroachment, and then you have a, um, yeah, an enforcement situation, like, over time, you know, these parcels, not, not these specifically, but parcels that are scattered, you know, they'll, all of a sudden, they'll have a shed on them, and then they'll be mowed, and then they got a fence around them, and then.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I was sort of curious as to whether, I, I wouldn't see it as any reason why we ought to take ownership of it, but whether it would be valuable to the Roberts, um, potentially.
Could be, it could be. Certainly, the, you know, behind this, extend their job, you know, I, I haven't spoken to them at all, but if I'm not even sure they're aware of the controversy right now, it might be.
I wouldn't actually call it a controversy.
A choice.
Yes, there you go.
Can I, can I ask a question? Kate, I had just brought you up into this. I had a question about whether or not the property would be something that if the town was able to accept it as a gift or donation, if it's something that the Climate and Action Committee or the Open Space and Rec Committee, I understand it's wet, but would ever use that as a potential learning, educational center, or is there anything that, that your groups would potentially use that for before just giving it away to something else?
Yeah, so, I analyzed the parcel earlier today, and, um, the topography on that piece of land is tough. As Ken had said, it's also very wet. I was looking at it possibly for like a little pocket park for that area, would be something kind of cool. Um, it would probably take a lot of taking down trees, wetland areas, a lot of permitting issues with that, probably not the best spot. If we can go real quickly back to the parcel, I'll show you one thing I did think of real quickly.
From a maintenance perspective, we potentially could look at fundraising and having that be leveled from a tree perspective, if you could get it to the, the status that you wanted it, but from a pocket and educational standpoint, it, that was more or less my question.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, if you look, so, can you see between 12, 11 and 12 up there?
Are they here?
Yeah. So, up at nine.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at this, right?
Yeah, so, this big parcel up here, this is the Streeter property that we've been talking about.
Correct.
Um, possibly acquired with Green Belt. So, we were looking earlier today at this whole area to see if it would be nice to have some sort of connection or pathway, because if we're working with Green Belt to acquire that property, eventually, there'll be trails back there.
Yep.
Um, I really don't see a huge value in connecting these over that way, because this neighborhood will already be serviced by that area, and then there's another connection up, if you pull it down a little bit, another paper street. So, this, eventually, if this goes through, fingers crossed, we would be having trails and other resources there. This is a really hard parcel to put a little pocket park in. So, it might be behoove us to wait and do something up there, which would still service this neighborhood. But either way, I'd be happy to look more into it.
Thank you, folks. Can, can we? I think we've beaten to death this piece of property, this property's not useful for the town.
Yeah, I, I agree that I don't see what this would add to the town, what benefit it really would bring, and I would be in support of the project that Steve was talking about earlier, at looking at all of these tiny parcels. I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to be landlord for all of these postage stamp parcels, and we should not add to the list. I think we should start whittling that list down. Um, not probably for this year, that's, I think, too much, but potentially having it on the goals and objectives for next year, heading into next year's town meeting. So, that would be my preference.
So, we don't have to make a motion here, do we? I think all we, all we're doing is we're instructing Steve to say no.
The interest isn't there to pursue other avenues.
I agree with that.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? All right, so we now move to updating discussion on distribution of the employee handbook.
All right, so this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Ken.
So, just, just a quick status update on this. So, we, as you know, the board adopted a new employee handbook, and, uh, Deidre and Diane spent a ton of time, you know, rewriting it, including all the pertinent human resource policies in conjunction with Joe, and, and, um, so, the plan was to distribute it, so at this point, we're ready to distribute it to all non-union, um, and, uh, board and committee members for review and signature. The union council has interpreted that it could be considered by the unions to be a change in working conditions, and it may trigger a bargaining, a bargainable event where the town would be, um, required to bargain this, uh, integration into, you know, essentially, the town's personnel bylaws. So, to not muddy, you know, already difficult negotiations, we're holding off on, you know, integrating that with, uh, the union labor until contracts are settled, and then we will send notification to the union leadership, um, you know, basically advising them that, or informing them that we're, you know, we are, we've implemented this new document, and that we do not believe it to be a bargainable, um, event, but, uh, they may see it differently. And it will, you know, complicate the integration of it. So, that's where we are. I figured I'd bring it to the board to let you know that, um, the email will be going out, we're going to be having signatures via DocuSign, so all of you will be getting a copy and be asked to sign an acknowledgement of receipt.
Receipt of what?
Receipt of the personnel bylaws. The personnel, excuse me, the personnel handbook and associated policies.
To all, to non-union personnel?
To non-union and all board committee members and non-union staff. And over the last three or four months, have, as we've been onboarding new staff members, they've been signing it, so we have been keeping up with, uh, new staff.
Should we consider scheduling a, an executive session to discuss the advice that you received from Labor Council, um, vis a vis, um, the union employees, and whether there might be any revisions to the handbook, um, that could be relevant to that question?
Yeah, we can, we can. We'll be scheduling tentatively, and we can now as, uh, executive session. Next, we have to discuss the DPW Director's Contract, which is up on the 1st of the year. So, he's looking for an extension, and I have those terms that he'll be looking for, so we'll, I'll be asking the board to meet an executive session next time anyways, and we can include this as part of the discussion, so that's what you wish.
If that's, if that's agreed upon by the board, um, to, to have that discussion, an executive session, then it would make sense to defer, um, signing and approval of distribution of the handbook to anybody, um, because we'd want a uniform handbook. If it's going to be potentially revised based on what you've learned from Labor Council.
Yeah, I'm not sure we would revise the handbook more of, we would have to bargain their willingness to sign it.
Oh.
So, it could be a situation where they are looking for, again, I don't, this is, they're looking for compensation, or I don't believe there to be any material changes that change working conditions in that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, and I know you can't really get into the, the nitty-gritty of the advice that you got, so.
But I'll add it, we'll continue the conversation, I mean, it's, well, I guess it's up to the board, whatever, whatever the board wants to do, so I'm totally fine with it.
When's the, when's the next executive?
Well, if, if you really want to know, I suggest that we adjourn the December 3rd, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
Board Meeting at 7:24, and our next meeting is December 17 at 6:30.
There's other matters.
Also, right?
Other matters, as may have not, do we have other matters?
I have one thing.
Oh, 14th, right?
Right, but I was just, I was just, I was asking, I didn't, I forgot what you said in terms of the date of the next executive.
December 17, I believe.
Okay, so that's right. So we would, we would, if, if the board's agreed, we would take this up as part of the executive session on the 17th.
Yep.
Okay.
Schedule wise, the next meeting is the 14th, is that right?
Was it the 14th? I was thinking the 17th.
No, no, I mean, Saturday, is Saturday budget still on?
Oh, yeah, Saturday budget is still on, that's correct.
And what time's that?
Oh.
8:30.
8:30.
That's, that's a real problem for me. We're doing Clay Christmas on the 14th. Because my, my...
This is just preliminary anyhow, right?
Okay.
We'll be over by noon.
Yes. Because noon's recent.
All right, so...
Yeah, we gotta go to that, I believe.
I'm doing all my Christmas shopping right now for the 14th. So what do you got?
Well, one thing, the 17th is also the middle school concert. This happens every year. So if we could start early, as early as practicable, I would appreciate it, so that I can attend part of the meeting before the concert.
What time are you thinking?
Concert's at 7.
Start at 5?
I can't start before 6.
I, I can start, I can start 4:30.
No, I cannot start before 6.
Oh, you cannot start before 6.
And are we doing executive session that day?
That's...
That's what's planned.
I can start at 6.
Well, that's, that's a real problem.
Well, at least 6 is better than 6:30.
You can't do it before 6.
Can we do, we do the executive session on the 14th, add it there? Now would allow us to get more business done between 6 and 7 on the 17th? Just a question to Steve.
Yeah, I don't see one at 8 o'clock for a half hour.
Sure.
Sure.
Are you buying coffee?
Probably early in the day anyway.
Maybe early, right.
It's a little earlier. Do you see me pulling into Bukeur, like coming in hot at 8?
It's the middle school winter concert.
Right.
It's the last year I'll have this issue. She's in eighth grade, so...
So 6 o'clock.
You have something else?
One more thing, yes. So it came to our attention today, this afternoon, that there may be some inconsistency with how, among the five of us, with how we are implementing the town administrators' review process. And that's of concern to me because I like to be very clear on HR processes, and I think it's important to adhere to what was agreed upon. These are legal processes. So I would like to put a pause on the process and schedule a discussion, either for executive session if it's appropriate, or for the next meeting, so that people can bring any changes that they would like, that they're discussed by the board, and that we go forward with the agreed upon process. But I think deviations at this point should not continue.
I'll add to that. I, I agree with Deidre's sentiment, and I think that to the extent that any town employees have been asked to participate in a review process, it is not the process that the entire board has sanctioned, that those employees should not do so until other matters clarified.
I agree.
So that's a request for it to be adjented.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty.
Move to adjourn, 7:28 PM.
Move to adjourn the December 3, 2024 Select Board Meeting at 7:28 PM, and our next meeting is December 17 at 6:30, 6.
Don't we have an executive session on the 14th?
All right, discussion? Oh, I had you a second.
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 Sorry, what was your question?
Well, we have an executive session now on the 14th, so the next meeting is...
At 8 AM, right, yeah.
Yeah, so we're meeting at 6 to get, we're meeting at, just so I, I know, we're meeting at, at 6 on the 17th to get as much business done as we can, regular business. And we're having executive session at 8 o'clock on the 14th, right? Is that what everybody heard?
The budget, talk, yeah.
All right. Second, if no one's seconded already.
Okay, and so Peter votes yes.
Deidre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Terry, yes.